Please stand for a moment aside. Would you like to lead it?
I would like to lead it. The United States of America, the Republic of America, stands one nation under God, individual representative justice for all.
Roll call, Jim. Mrs. Cendia? Mr. Dever?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Tinkin?
Here.
Mr. Vorbach?
Here.
Mayor Mechanico?
Here.
Please state the Open Public Meeting Act compliance.
Pursuant to the requirements of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was included in the annual meeting notice which has been sent to the Coast Star newspaper and Hasbury Park Press, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, and provides to all those requesting notice and providing payment in accordance with borough policy.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the Board of Health and the rec-- I'm sorry, beautification of the--
I'll make that. I'd like to make an amendment to the amended agenda. To add a discussion item on the proposed public meeting concerning Route 71--
Rezone?
Rezone.
Discussion item?
Yes, please.
Okay, Route 71, here that. May I have a second? We have a second, you second?
Yeah.
Roll call, everybody? Any questions on that? We have two additions, the Board of Health--
Yes, yes, good.
--and the beautification for Mr. Dever, as a discussion item, the rezoning of Highway 71. Mr. Dever?
We introduce it in a second.
I made the motion, Rich second.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation by Borough Engineer Joe May on this building handicap.
Yeah, Mayor and Council. A few years ago, approximately a half hill, we got some money from the office of elections to do some handicap improvements for both the community center and for all. We have completed the improvements at the community center in the back. As you may have known, we filled in the staircase in the back and now there's a handicap ramp which goes directly to the back door. And we have the automatic door there and you have the automatic door in rear of this building. Due to the hurricane sanity, we were planning to get this done last fall, that kind of happened in the back corner. Essentially, what we're doing is, perhaps move over here if everyone can see it, the two handicap spots with space, the south end of the building now, we're going to turn 90 degrees to get them closer. Currently, the pitch from the door threshold to that bottom curb exceeds the allowable slope for handicap, so we're just flipping those two around to get it closer so we can get an acceptable grade, and at the same time, trying to protect our building a little bit and do some other slight improvements, which would do a positive thing for the building. Esthetically, we will remove the striping of the two last of the seven spots which are parallel to the entrance driveway. So that'll be the casualty of this plan. However, those spaces, I'm not quite sure how they got there. I guess they were probably put there as a necessity at one point, but they aren't on the original site plan. At the same time, the original site plan also had a lowly department area. It's, I speak with the administrator, we want to get this solid way of handicap in the future. If the borough wants to entertain, maybe some parking changes in the future, we can look at that. The parking lot is in some bad shape now. Right now, we're going to focus on getting this grant money spent. We do have some time-sensitive dates we've got to be sure we meet, so we're going to take care of this so we can use that money and then we can move forward from there. It wouldn't impact anything later on. These handicap spaces will be moved, so we don't really have to do anything redundant or spend the money twice. We just want to get this ADA money spent. If anybody has any questions.
So you have the money, Joe?
Yeah, we got a lot of it to us approximately two years ago. It was about $36,000. We spent $7,000 on doors and another four, five thousand on filling in the stairwell and doing those improvements, so we still have quite a bit of money left. We have requests and proposals. We're getting them back tomorrow, and we hope to see they're within range to get this worked out.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, I'd like to open first voice to the public. You may speak on agenda item only at this time. You have anything you'd like to speak on the agenda, just step forward and state your name and address. We'll close with first voice to the public. Need a motion to close it?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion item. Raffle license process, Jay?
Yes, Mayor, I had requested that this be placed in the agenda. Just by way of background, currently, as I think the council is aware, almost every meeting, we have a consent resolution that includes a number of raffle licenses. The current process is that the applications are submitted, they are submitted or then referred to the police department for a review, and then they come back and ultimately, the council has to approve them. Thereafter, we submit the approved applications to the state. There's a 15-business-day waiting period. At that time, then, we formally issue the license, assuming that the state has not notified us of any objection. One of the problems with this current process is that it creates two bottlenecks. For the applicants, depending on when the meeting scheduling is and their event, we end up sometimes having to rush the review in order to make a council meeting. And then thereafter, what happens because of the 15-day waiting period, we have all these applications and the paperwork the day after the meeting we submit to the state. And frankly, in the big scheme of things, it is not, or should not be, our number-one post-meeting priority, but because of the time necessity for the applicants to get the paperwork to the state, that's what it becomes. A few years back, there was a change in the state raffle regulations that permitted governing bodies to delegate the approval authority to the clerk. And the advantage of that is that instead of having these applications piled up and be approved en masse, we're able to process them as they come in, send them off to the state, and it actually reduces substantially the impact for the nonprofit organizations that are trying to conduct the raffles. That's my suggestion. If the council has no objection, I would ask the attorney to prepare such an ordinance for the council's preparation.
Anyone have objection?
No. I don't know how significant this is, but one advantage, the present system is it does bring it into the public domain. In other words, if somebody has an objection to something, they can voice their objection.
That's true. Although frankly, there is not a provision for a public hearing or a notification to the public, I would certainly have no problem with reporting to the council on the applications that have been submitted, but eliminating the approval process or what I would call the backlog that is created because of the approval process by the council.
Would you want to see the raffle license from Jay beforehand, Tom?
Well, I guess I'd look at the ordinance. I'm just saying it is a possibility. I'm not saying I'm against the idea, just something we should think about.
Yeah, I would also just point out that I can't recall ever someone having an objection to one of the raffle--
Yeah, everyone's going to ask a question.
Then we'll have--
So maybe we had to make this list to let us know what's going on.
Sure. And again, as I said, perhaps just a report to the council as to the raffles that have been issued or that are pending each--
Pending, yeah, so we, you know-- Exactly. So at least we notify. Right, exactly.
I'm sure we give--
It's a responsibility, right?
Work that into the ordinance.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Anything else? Thank you, Jay. Mr. Dever?
On the rezoning on Highway 71, I know that, I watched the now-famous television show. I am not available March 20th. I know Sarah's not available March 20th. And I personally think it should be held during a regular council meeting, and everybody knows it's going to take place in the first place. And I think in reviewing that video of the meeting, it seemed that March 11th was something that everybody was pretty well available for, so I'd like to make a motion to move that meeting from March 20th to March 11th, the next council meeting. Council meetings should start at 7:00. There should be nothing else on the agenda but this. So that's a regular council meeting, but the only thing on the agenda would be the rezoning.
I'll second.
Do we want to check with Councilwoman Cendia?
Yeah.
You have comments, questions?
We did spend a--
Big question.
I would almost say--
As you know from the video--
I say it in an ordinary amount of time--
Probably 17 minutes or so.
--I come up with it. And I say it multiple times, I would like to see you there as well. I'd like to also see--
Jim?
--Cendia there as well. I think March 11th there, she was available, from what I saw on the tape. And I'm pretty sure she is.
Chris, I see you--
March 11th is our regular meeting?
Yes.
Tom, sorry.
March 11th is--
We have a second, correct?
Yes. I'd second.
Any other questions? It's a regular meeting, and the agenda will be clear--
Jim, are you here on the 11th, or are you in the islands?
Not, I'm here.
Okay.
And the understanding was that there was going to be a public notification that was also discussed at the last meeting. It was actually going to be a town-wide notification.
We want as many people as we know. Get as many people as you want.
Everything stays the same except for the date.
And also, there was some discussion about whether we would need to potentially relocate to a larger facility depending upon the crowd.
So how would we typically handle that? Would we anticipate a big crowd and then go to the school? We should know ahead of time, right?
Yeah, if you haven't already checked availability of the school for March 11th, I think that after you make your decision tonight, that first order of business would be to check to the school, and if the school is available, then notice the newspapers that the meeting is actually going to be, change of venue that evening to the school, and proceed accordingly.
Yeah, just by way of background, you may recall that the March 20th date somewhat came out of nowhere, and at the last meeting, we were not sure of the availability of the school, but subsequently, we determined that it was available. I have not checked for March 11th, but I will do that first thing in the morning as a backup plan. And again, we anticipated sending that notice out later this week, so we are still sufficient time to make that notification.
Anything else? Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Reports, council reports. Mr. Tinkin, do you have a report?
Yeah, recreation. I know in the past, the recreation has donated two passes to the summer recreation program and two passes to the fall soccer program, where the Education Foundation, PTO, Lucky Lady Fashion Show that's coming up on March 10th. I'd like to make a motion that we do that again this year.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes. Thank you.
And the other thing, Mayor, yes, we're looking into, as part of the rec program, bringing back some bus trips, some matinees to Broadway, some children's trips to maybe like the Please Touch Museum down in Philadelphia, and then perhaps some baseball games. I know we used to do that in the past, and one of the issues, I think, that why we don't do it anymore is because I know now bus companies and the matinee and the baseball teams all require upfront payment. So what we're going to have to do, because people do want to do it, but we're going to have to make it non-refundable. You're going to have to reserve a spot, pay, and make it non-refundable. Otherwise, you know, the town could end up eating all those losses. So I think it's fair, if people want it, to ask that they reserve and pay upfront with a no refund policy.
I would just make one suggestion, and this is something we looked in. There is an issue of liability on any of these trips, and it is also, you can find charter trips that you can join, which would alleviate some of that issue, because then they have the liability. So you may just want to look at that.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you. Okay, thank you, thanks. Vorbach? Mrs. King?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Dever?
Just basically on the budget, the governor will be making his announcements Wednesday. We should get some idea of what State 8 is going to look like, and then we'll be proceeding forward on bringing the budget to fruition.
But he will give some aid, isn't it?
Please God.
Mr. Schuler?
Nothing to report.
I have nothing as well. New business, none at this time, resolutions. Now, we have Resolution R. 2013-35, authorizing adjustment of water sewer utility accounts. Need a motion and a second. Some accounts that-- Some water sewer utility that were built and have to be adjusted, all right, some were disconnected--
Buildings that were done in error. You'll see that the amounts canceled are essentially excess charges due to either problems with the meters or a billing cycle issue.
Do you need--
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions?
Apparently, they were either building error or paid twice. If I could just--
Go ahead.
Do you have a motion or something?
Yes, yes, discussion.
There is a letter in here from the individual in town. I don't think that's included. No, I agree, I don't think it's-- It's a different issue.
Yeah, I think that's a separate issue.
And that happens from time to-- Well, couldn't we do something there, or do we have to wait for the next--
That's not overbilling, is it?
If the council wishes to make that adjustment that's been requested, we could include it here, or we would typically prepare that as a resolution for the next meeting based on the outcome of the--
If you would, you know, I wouldn't object to it, but it's next meeting. I just don't know what we would give back. Right, I think it's better to wait. Because we've had a couple of people that had these instances where someone comes in, you know, it's a summer residence, someone fixes something for them, they think it's done, and the water's still-- Agree. It's not their fault. A couple of weeks is, you know-- Sure. I just don't want to, you know, let that-- All it's waiting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Anything else on that? Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution R. 2012-13-36, the singular wireless development application, need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Basically, they're updating their equipment, as I understand it.
Correct.
And they're making an application that's planned to work.
Yeah, I read that, okay. They're not adding any big tower on top of--
They're adding some antennas, that's why I read it correctly.
But nothing out of proportion to what it already is, right? I think it's replacing some things. Right, that's what I thought. Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Should I do the Board of Health the new beautification, Jay, or would you last?
Whenever you'd like. Probably last, that way the numbers are sequenced.
Because the numbers would be in-- They 39 and 40, is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Financial resolution, motion to move bills to the Finance Committee?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution R. 2013-37, approving the payment claim for February 20th, 2013 bill list.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any question? Roll call, Jim?
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Consent resolution, R. 2013-38, the raffle license. We have three. Need a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion, I'll second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. I have resolution number R. 2013-39, appointing members to the Board of Health, it'd be Vicki Hanlon for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2015, and Kate Monoly-- Thank you, thank you, Mrs. King-- Unexpired three-year term ending December 31st, 2013. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions? Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution R. 2013-40, appointing members to the Beautification Committee, Catherine Hahn, chairman for one-year term ending 203113, Eileen Islandberger, member, one-year term ending 20, I'm sorry, 123113, Eva McKee, member, one-year term ending 123113, Lisa Britton, member, one-year term ending 123113, and Susan Herner, member, one-year term ending 123113. Need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Roll call, Jim.
Mr. Dever?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkin?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Second voice to the public. You may, yes, you may speak on any item you like, just give your name and address, please.
Regarding the townwide mailer, I guess now, since the dates have been changed--
Yes.
--that I guess it better go out pretty quickly. And also, I wonder if it would be possible to include a copy of the map of the proposed area in the mailer, I think that would be great.
Thank you.
And also, as we discussed last time, I hope that we're going to get more than one meeting, because now that it's changed again, perhaps not as many people are going to know about this, and then maybe after the first meeting, they would hear about it, because I don't think we could resolve this in one meeting either.
We'll take it one step at a time. We'll see how this one goes, and if we need to plan for another, we will.
Right, but I mean, I just hope that something's not going to get absolutely decided on the first meeting that we have.
I don't think anything would be decided at that meeting.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Cat Griffin, Fox 64, Atlantic Avenue. I wanted to ask if anybody had information about the gas company planning to do work around Atlantic Avenue and that area. Last week, the borough guys were doing a markout on the street, and when we asked them, they said the gas company is coming in and putting in new lines. And then today, in my door, there was a little piece from the gas company explaining a little bit about what was going to happen, that they're not really in-depth. So I was just wondering, where am I going to be able to park? You know, when you look at a dead-end street, there's finite ways in and out, and I'm just kind of nervous about, you know, how far away am I going to have people up in the rain when I get home at night? Does anybody know?
I could maybe help you there. I heard from the relocation of the gas main and the set, they're going to, they do very little full trenching anymore. Most, it's going to be, is a boring machine on one end of the street, the other. It's not going to be as intense as Old Mill Road at the gas operation.
Do they pay for now?
In some areas, they submitted for road open permit, which just indicated the area, and all they said was completely trenches as required. They don't give us budget for anything.
Okay, because in the piece they leave in your door, they say they have the option to use the right-of-way, and having just put in a new sidewalk, I'm thinking, great, you know, there goes that, so.
Yeah, and that's what they do is they kind of look, well, is it going to be cheap plus repair the road, or fix your sidewalk, or the trees or the roofs, they kind of, they determine where they're going to go. I'm in town daily, trying to make sure that--
Are they just doing Atlantic, or are they doing that whole neighborhood?
They're doing Atlantic, and I believe some of Monmouth. Now, if I recall correctly, that one portion of Monmouth is just done, so I'm a little confused at that myself, but I'll find out for the work source exactly what's going on, and I can stop at your house, I know--
Yeah, well, even more important, you might want to let Kimberly from the Coast Star know to see if they would put something in, because I know in those apartments, if they're going to block Sixth Avenue, there's a lot of seniors who live in those apartments, and you know, it's just disruptive enough to--
And also, the borough needs to make sure--
Yeah.
We have a storm event or something, we need to make sure that--
Yeah, the trash trucks get in and out in the plow, so, yeah. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, and--
Cat, I have a piece of paper here that was just given to me as an FYI, because I raised the question. And it says that they're replacing Atlantic, Essex, Sussex, Sixth, and Monmouth between Route 71 and the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay, so that's pretty widespread up there.
That's what this says.
Might want to let the fire company know too, since that's going to impact, you know, you also, in addition with snowplows, you want to make sure the fire trucks can go out if they need to, and it's not going to impact them too much, so. And just one more thing, Beautification Committee, when and where do they meet? Because any government committee, any, under the Open Public Meetings Act, any citizen has the right to attend a meeting, so for example, I know with recreation, when Rich and Jim were doing recreation, some residents used to come to those meetings. And I know they're more like ad hoc committees, but they still are considered to be municipal meetings. And, you know, I heard there was some concern last year about that, and I just was checking to see, are they being held on--
We have--
At a public building?
Okay, well, Kathy Hahn's the chairperson. We'd have to see if she has scheduled meetings. I don't think it's posted out there on the board, is it, Jay?
Well, considering that this, these are just the appointments being made to the committee, they haven't really started functioning for the year yet, but.
I think we have to give them a chance.
No, well, I understand last year, there was some upheaval about where they were meeting, and there was some concern that the chairman couldn't make the meeting, so.
According to what Kathy Hahn told me about a month ago, is that the meetings, whenever she has called the meeting as the chairman, they're held at the community center or they're held here in this building.
Okay, yeah, so if they can be posted on the board, if somebody wants to attend, that would be helpful. Okay, thank you, Cat.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Yes. Make your name, Tom, and address, please.
Thompson at the E. O. Martin Road. I'm just concerned about the flooding that's been occurring over at Red Pond and what sort of remedies that are going to be, any remedies that are going to be done for the people that live over there. I know that certain towns have already gotten money from the federal government to, you know, to help, whether it's mitigate or to help out the town that they're managing. I know you mentioned the governor and, you know, the grants. Now, towns have already been getting some money, I'm just wondering why we haven't, you know, tried to get some money and help out the, you know, the people that are living, especially on Shore Road, you know, help that out and mitigate the problems.
Well, there's going to be a.
Yes, Mayor, if I may. We have recently coordinated with FEMA, a meeting that will be held here on Thursday, March 7th. We have invited FEMA representatives to cover issues regarding the new base flood elevation maps, the recent changes to the flood insurance program, as well as the hazard mitigation grant program, which I believe is one of the programs that communities will be applying for, for grants. I'm not, there may be some communities that received post-storm hazard mitigation funds after Irene, but the process for the post-sandy funding cycle is just starting. And in fact, we're conducting this meeting as part of our plans to submit a letter of intent for federal and state funds for residents, whether they be acquisition or building modification